Okay. Great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Owen. Um, welcome to the Select Board Interview Subcommittee Subcommittee pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts 2023, an act relative to the extending certain COVID-19 measures. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No person, no in-person attendance by the members of the public are permitted. The order allows the interview Subcommittee to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. All members of the interview Subcommittee are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. This meeting will not feature public comment. Each vote taken this evening will be conducted by roll call vote if, if we vote, which we're not sure we're voting. Um, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Julianne Hirsch is not here, so our special guest star this evening is Mitch Cohen.
Hello.
Hello. You are here. Great. And then I, Kristin Wickstead, am here. And we are all set to get going. We already have our first guest this evening. Um, for the interviewing for the Community Affairs Committee is, wait, Alia Groza?
Correct. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for applying for the Community Affairs Committee. We also have our Chair of the Community Affairs Committee, Suzie Sislicca. Hello, Suzie.
Good evening or good afternoon.
Yeah. I think it's technically evening at 5:30, isn't it?
I'm clinging to the sunshine, just like I'm clinging to summer.
Yes. Um, okay, so we have, um, I read your, um, hold on, I gotta find my application. Here it is. So, um, Alia, usually how we start the, um, these interviews is, um, keeping in mind that the public who may be watching hasn't had a chance to see your resume that we have had. They will eventually get to see it when you, um, when you come before the full board for a vote, because after the interview, then the full Select Board has to vote, and then your, your application will be in the packet then. But, um, in the meantime, um, I always like to ask everybody what specifically interests you about this particular committee, the Community Affairs Committee?
All right. Since we have two interviews in a row, can you please tell me which one we start with?
Yeah, the Community Affairs Committee.
Community Affairs. All right. So, to be honest, I never thought I will be interested in anything like that. Um, we moved to the town. Um, it's funny, it's exactly nine year, eight years ago. If today is August 20, 29th, yes. Exactly eight years ago, we moved to Northborough, and I was always at school, working several jobs, so I never had a chance to be involved in the town activities. Now, uh, I graduated. I am a renal dietitian now, and I work at one of the dialysis clinics in the area. So now I have a little bit more spare time, and I decided to give back to the community since it was my, um, I don't know, sacred place, safe place during COVID time, during school times. I love the neighborhood. I love the community, the area. Um, so that kind of like extra time, uh, seeing people around me, that was the inspiration. And of course, of course, talking to some of the members.
Great. Awesome. Um, okay, uh, Mitch, did you want to ask anything specific?
No, um, no, I read through the application. Uh, no, no specific questions or concerns. Um, I'd love, uh, for Suzie to have the opportunity of explaining maybe a little bit about what Community Affairs does and ask any specific questions relating to that committee.
Great. Sure. Um, we started in the 1980s. It was a, it came before annual town meeting. Um, and it was voted upon, um, and it was basically just bringing the community together is what we, our main purpose is, is we like to plan fun. We, is what, um, we like to say that we do. We plan fun, and we like to bring the community together. We like togetherness. We actually, um, COVID hit us kind of hard, just personally in our hearts, because this is what we do. We like to bring people together, and we really tried to do everything we could to bring people together and bring our businesses together and do everything we could. Um, that said, we do have, while we have like our cornerstone events that we don't like to change, we do have some fluid events that we have changed over the years. Um, I'll start with the events that we have planned for sure in the coming year. Um, and then I'll kind of explain how some things have changed over the last couple of years in case you're like, wait a minute, I thought you guys did that. Um, so we started Kindness Week a couple of years ago. We were inspired by our neighboring town, Westborough, and it's really taken off. We started last year with just, um, coffee hours and working with the school district. Last year, it almost became unmanageable because we've been down a couple of members, and I was literally running from event to event for a week. Um, this year, we have, um, kind of partnered with our Recreation Department, and they have offered, um, their signup technology and, um, hopefully coordinating a lot. And so during Kindness Week, we did, um, we had a local author do a reading at the school. We had our coffee hours, which we are gonna keep instituting with like our Chief of Police, our Chief, our Fire Chief. We had our Assistant Town Administrator. Um, and Mitch, um, came to, um, was wonderful to host one as well. Um, I'm trying to think. We did, um, a free belly dancing class, which was phenomenal at the, at Town Hall. Um, so those were some of the thing. Oh, and we did, um, a drive for the animal shelter through the Rec Department, which they had, they had a, a whole thing of stuff. And Anzie School did one. Um, Proctor did a food drive, like all the schools did something, so it was really phenomenal. And we're thinking, because February is a tough month, um, with school break and everything, and people going on vacation and spring break, um, that we're gonna do a whole kind of month, and we're just inspiring groups to do it. We're gonna coordinate it and just stick to our colors. But this week, um, we do the Louise Wool Annual Town Cleanup in April. The last Saturday in April, Louise was, um, our founder, and she, um, her children still live in the area, and she was just fantastic. So we love having the evening day after her. Um, we were lucky enough to, um, get some of the ARPA money and, um, purchase, um, trash grabbers. Um, we have the, the DPW helps us out. They go around picking up the yellow trash bags. Um, it's kind of, you know, all the departments come together and help us out. Um, we coordinate the street signup, and we, uh, we can get sponsors for the breakfast, like, um, through Wegmans and everything. We offer like a breakfast, and we bring in the different community groups now. So it's kind of like a little community fair while people are picking up their bags and gloves and trash bags. Um, then we have our five summer concerts at, um, Ellsworth McAfee Park.
Suzie, um, Suzie, yeah, these are only supposed to be 10-minute interviews, so.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
A little more detail than I think, okay, but thank you. I know.
Yeah, I love, I love our, but we do, we do have our events, and then we switch stuff. Yeah. Yeah, we do. Some of the things that we do do is we get out in the community. We do find sponsors that were very. Um, basically.
Yeah.
And if you're well, you're always welcome to attend in a meeting, too. We have meetings once a month from September through June. Um, and we have a very active text thread because we're like, did you call so-and-so? Did you do the, you know, like, we don't vote on budgets or anything over text, but, you know, it's just always like, we can't cover everything in a one-hour-a-month meeting. And both Kristin and Mitch have attended our meetings and seen. We do the bare bones of the stuff, and then the rest of the month, have you gotten here? Have you done this? So.
Yeah. No, it is. It is great. They're a well-oiled machine, so.
In incredible how much work, um, the, the small group of volunteers does. So I, my, my question would be, are you prepared?
I am prepared, and I'm, I'm really pleased to hear that you were inspired by the neighbor town, Westborough. I really love their, uh, group, um, newcomers of Westborough that has all kind of different activities, and it's a great opportunity for people who live in Westborough, who moved to Westborough, not only just to get to know the town, their community, but to serve the community. So I think, uh, what, what you do in Northborough is kind of the same. Um, so yes, I am, I am ready. If I'm chosen, I am.
Okay. Great. Um, so you don't have any, um, questions then? Do you know how this works? As a process? I think I said earlier, like, at our next Select Board meeting, you, you would be voted on. Um, and that meeting is when, Mitch? He usually has.
Uh, the 11th of September is our next Select Board meeting.
Okay, so that would be the date that hopefully we'll get this on the agenda. And, um, do you have any other questions for Suzie? Sorry, what?
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just said, did you have any other questions for Suzie?
Uh, when do they, do you usually meet? Uh, what kind of hours?
It's, um, it's the third Wednesday of the month, and we usually meet either at, um, Town Hall or the library, depending on where I can book a room, and if we're gonna be meeting with, um, Ally from the, the head of the Rec Department. And I, I also want to say that, um, no matter how the vote goes for the Select Board, you're always welcome to come to a meeting and just start helping out. I myself was not a voted, um, upon member. I just started going to meetings and helping out for about six to eight months, and just helping out, because they didn't need someone, but we always need help. So, um, that's kind of how I got started. Um, with the, with the, and we just had someone helping with, um, helping on our committee for about, I want to say, eight or nine months, who wasn't even an official member, um, for a while before she was, um, officially sworn in. So.
Yeah, you just have.
Always welcome. Yeah.
First spot to open, but we do have one spot, and right now you're the only person.
Yes. So just, yes, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Suzie, actually. So we'll keep.
Thank you.
And we'll let us go. All right.
So I can leave now. Thank you, guys.
And bye. Thanks.
Bye.
See you soon.
Have a good day.
Okay, now I can let, um, Miriam in? Okay, so now are you ready for your, do you need like a glass of water or like a deep breath? And now we're, we'll do, um, DEIB. And here's Miriam. She is the Chair of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. There she is.
Mary.
Hi, guys.
So Miriam, this is, um, Alia. She has applied to be on the DEIB Committee.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. I'm Miriam.
We, we had the liberty of briefly interviewing Alia moments ago because she's applied for two different committees. So we've already had the brief introduction, but we know you weren't, you weren't here, so, um, maybe we'll start by asking Alia to, um, introduce herself briefly and, uh, and say, what, you're a chair in this committee?
Yeah.
Am I go, I'm sorry. I apologize, Kristin.
No, you're fine. You're fine. I just wanted to make sure you added that why, why she's applying for this committee now as opposed to the other one.
I'll do my spiel again. So same as with the Community Affairs Committee, I was never thinking that I'll be interested, like, in depth in diversity and inclusion. Um, myself, I'm from Belarus, and my husband is from Ukraine. Um, and recently, just because of the, what's going on in this, uh, in the world, um, during the wartime, we've been helping a lot of people, a lot of refugees from Ukraine, a lot of refugees from, uh, even Russia. A lot of young families escaping, uh, Russia now and come here for a better life. And it gave us an opportunity to see, um, what the town, the community is lacking. And we are kind of like a bridge in between of our community here, um, in Northborough, because Ukrainian population, um, I don't know if you've met someone from Ukraine already here. Um, if you've met someone from other countries like, uh, Belarus or Russia, but the population is growing. So, um, definitely, and I think if there will be someone to represent, represent them, um, that will be kind of, um, an asset for the community in general.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I actually studied Russian language and literature in college, and I spent a couple of summers in Ukraine. And, um, oh, I know, I know a lot of Ukrainian people, but I haven't really kept in touch because I'm old enough that this was just before the internet, and it, we wrote letters for a long time, but then, you know, I wasn't using my Russian, and it got really rusty, and it was hard to write letters in Russian after a while. So, um, I have a very big, um, like, connection to that community. I have, and I do have one neighbor who's Russian, but they've lived here for a long time. Um, but I, I haven't really run into, in Northborough, a lot of, um, Ukrainian or Russian refugees. Have either of you, Miriam or Mitch, heard, heard of that yet around here?
No, I mean, we're, we're friends with a Russian immigrant family that lives in Westborough, um, that have, have lived here for, for many, many years through one of our kids.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say so either, personally.
Yeah. Okay. Um, but you never know. We did, uh, I didn't know very many Haitian families either, and now we have a lot more of those in Northborough, too. So, um, so I guess you never do know who's gonna show up at your doorstep. Um, but Miriam, would you like to, um, explain a little what the DEIB Committee does and how you, um, like, what your main goals and objectives are in the town?
Sure, I can. Um, I'm prepared anything, so, you know, I might not include everything or forget some things. But yeah, um, so we first started as an ad hoc committee, so it was brought forth, and that was in, what, 2020, I believe, into 2021. Um, so I was part of that committee as well. Um, our goals really were to look into diversity, equity, inclusion, and what we included is also belonging, so it's a DEIB Committee. Um, and so, yeah, that really just meant including, um, various resources and voices and identities and populations that we were not, our town was otherwise like not looking into. And so this committee specifically went into interviewing, um, all of the committees that were in town. Um, we talked to specific folks who worked in town or people who were volunteers in town. Um, yeah, we kind of listened to what they were lacking, what they were looking into as, um, what they needed for diversity, equity, and inclusion, um, whether that meant, um, specific training for town employees, or if that meant, um, including things in the school calendar, um, or having specific events that included, um, minority communities in town that we were overlooking. And so, yeah, that was the first year. Um, and we took all of this data, and we wrote a report, and we took it to the, um, board. And then moving forward, then we all, our, our main suggestion was that this committee become permanent, um, which was successful, and so now this committee is permanent. And, um, yeah, so this past year, uh, in recent, we looked into, there was a, um, ADA self-evaluation that went through, and we talked about that in our committee. Um, and then there was, I personally have participated as a member of the Town Administrator Search Committee, and I went in both as a member of town and also a member of, um, the DEIB Committee. Um, that's a little bit about our committee and what we've been doing. Yeah, it's really, we all just come in and bring whatever our concerns are, whatever we've been thinking about, and, um, through our conversations with other committees in town and other people working, um, yeah, we move forward, and we're like, what, what can we do next that we can, um, move the pedal forward for DI, um, in our town?
Great. Great. So, um, their umbrella sort of extends from, like, ADA, so that's, um, people with physical disabilities all the way to LGBTQIA+ people, and then, um, as well as people who are like immigrants, like yourself, but also people of color. And, um, I think your, your experience as an immigrant and as a person who, you know, for whom English is not your first language, would hopefully give you some empathy towards people who are having similar experiences, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I always try to learn a new language. As of now, the, the, the question they always ask, what time and what day do you meet as a committee is because I have my Portuguese class on Thursday nights.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. So what, when do you meet, Miriam?
Um, as of now, we meet on Mondays. I, let me just double check.
Yeah, it's like the first Monday of the month, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's Mondays usually. Hang on. Let me find.
They've, and they've only had a handful of meetings.
Yeah, so far, we've only had a handful of meetings.
Yeah, and while I have you here, since Becca is leaving, um, i-if you guys need help setting up meetings and whatever, um, you'll need a new staff.
Know what? Today, I just found out today that Becca's leaving. I didn't know this.
Yeah.
I'm so sad to find out.
Yeah, so we, we're gonna have to set up a new, um, staff liaison for you.
Yeah.
And I guess, um, well, we, we can, we can talk about that in another setting, but that is an important, that's an important thing if you join the committee, Alia, for you to know that we're in a little bit of transition because the staff liaison to the committee who sort of organizes things on the backend and sets up the meetings and writes the agenda and whatever is, um, she is leaving, and it's like, at the end of this week, so.
Yeah, Becca's honestly, honestly been huge for this committee and working with me and organizing this from the beginning, so I'm so sad.
Yeah.
But, yeah, she'll be missed.
So, um, okay. All right. Did you have any other questions, Alia, about, or for, for, um, Miriam?
Definitely. I got a great overview of both committees, and if you don't mind if I think of anything, can I just email? Uh, I have Diane's, uh, email address, uh, email, so maybe I'll, she'll connect us all together.
Yeah, and well, my email and Mitch's email are both online on the town website under the Select Board, so we're easy to find, too.
Yeah, if you reach out to Diane, um, you can get my email from her, and if you have any questions for me and our committee, that works out, too.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Alia. Thanks for coming.
Well, Alia, pleasure to meet you. Miriam, great to see you again.
Of course.
Well, Miriam's staying.
Yeah, I'm here for one.
Oh, you're, that's right. You've got one more. Okay.
Alia finally is done.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for suffering through two interviews, Alia.
Thank you. I hope you have a great night.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so now we have Mary.
Maria Alexandra.
Um, she has a name. Let me just find her. There she is.
She's in the waiting room. She left and came back once or twice.
Okay. We'll bring her in now so she doesn't feel like she's in the wrong place.
Yeah.
Hello. Oh, you're muted.
Well, I need to unmute myself, but I need to put it on speaker. I can't hear.
Can you hear us now? You're a little bit frozen?
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
Oh, I am a little frozen.
Nope. Now you're not. Well, thank you so much for volunteering for this committee. We really appreciate it. We know, um, everybody is so busy, and I read your resume, and you seem super busy, um, with a lot of things going on. Um, but, uh, we really appreciate you taking the time to, um, help us out and volunteer to help our town, right? And this is a really important committee. It's still very new, but it's, um, it's really important to, um, to the town. And because it's new, I think, uh, I'm just gonna start rambling here for a second before I do anything else. I think all your experience working in, um, the, you're the one who works in Fitchburg, right?
Correct, yeah.
And it sounds like you have DEI sort of, um, experience, and I think that's gonna be really helpful, um, for this committee. So, um, anyway, the other two people on this call are, um, Mitch and Miriam, and I'm Kristin, by the way. Um, and Mitch is on the Select Board with me. He's filling in on the interview committee tonight because my other interviewer is, um, away right now. And Miriam is the Chair of the DEIB Committee. So, anyway, I just wanted to say those things. I really enjoyed reading your resume and your, um, your letter. Um, and I, uh, I don't know, you seem like a great candidate for this committee. Um, Mitch and Miriam, would you, either one of you like to ask a question or?
If, if you want to, just in your own words, give us, uh, a little bit of more about yourself, that's something that wouldn't be readily apparent on your resume, and, uh, what interests you particularly in joining a, a committee in the town of Northborough, and particularly the Diversity, Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you. It's a pleasure to meet all of you, Mitch, Kristin, and Miriam. Thank you so much for taking the time to interview with me this late in the evening. I appreciate it. Um, so, yeah, a little bit about myself. I currently work in the Superintendent's Office in the Fitchburg Public Schools. I'm the Superintendent's Executive Assistant, so I'm the one that does all of our agendas for all of our school committee meetings. I watch all of our school committee meetings. It's necessary for my position. I need to know what's being approved, what's happening. I work closely with City Hall in Fitchburg. We collaborate on various things. And I realized that I know more about Fitchburg, City Hall, Fitchburg Committees and all of that than I do in the town that I live in. And I was like, that's something that totally has to change. And so I decided to kind of see what openings were available in town for various committees and things like that. And I happened to come across the DEI Committee, which to me, the DEIB Committee, which to me, obviously speaks closely to me. I am a recent Tufts graduate. I graduated with my master's in diversity, equity, and inclu-inclusion and justice leadership. Um, I graduated in February. Um, so this is something that I, I'd like to, although I'm able to use it in the current position that I'm in, I'd like to do a little bit more for the town that I live in. Our town is increasingly getting more and more diverse. Um, I have two boys, one's at Melican, one's at Algonquin. I mean, I can see that their friend, their friend group is expanding in terms of diversity. Um, and I, I just wanted to be involved and see exactly what Northborough was doing. And I have seen a few of the past, um, meetings that have been held. I think all of the meetings that I've been able to view have been on Zoom. Um, the recordings have been virtual. But I think it'd be exciting if we soon, you know, could meet in person and really, you know, go over the various things. But this is something I'm, I'm, I'm excited about if the opportunity, you know, were to come my way.
Awesome. No, that'd be great. Um, Miriam, do you want to talk a little bit about anything that, um, like, if she watched, if, do you go by Mary or Mary Alexandra?
I prefer Mary Alexandra, but I 100% respond to Mary as well.
No, I just, I like to get that right, because I have one of, I have two names that people mess up all the time, so I like to ask. Um, so, um, can you tell Mary Alexander a little bit about what, maybe some of the things you're working on, um, going forward the next few months?
Yeah, sure. Um, so, first of all, I'm really excited to hear that you have, like, background in DEI and DI leadership, because I think one of the main things that our committee, it's a rather new committee. Um, I was part of the ad hoc committee. That was like a short-term-lived committee, and now this is, um, it went on to become a permanent committee. And, um, so I've been working, uh, on this committee since. It went on to become a permanent committee and um, so I've been working uh, on this committee since its inception and I'm. Very excited to hear that you have this background because I think one of the biggest, I would say like hurdles that we're working on in our committee is. D I is such a large um, umbrella term, right? And so determining what our focuses are and what our goals are is definitely something that we're working on, um. So yeah, I would love to hear like your your um, experience working um. In Fitchburg and um, working in City Hall and working in the in the superintendent, in the intendant's office, excuse me. Um, yeah, so I would say that's one of the main things that, you know. Is something that's clear to me, we need to work on in our committee, um, I can tell you a little bit more about um, the background of the committee. Um, as I mentioned, it started as an ad hoc committee, so it was a short term committee and I mean, um. Directive there was to kind of speak to all the committees in town and specific employees in town and an idea of what was lacking. Um, and then we wrote a report and um, that included like adding certain events to the school calendar. And having more events in town, um, that centered minority communities that we were, you know, overlooking in general. And then um, moving forward, the committee then became permanent. And since then, um, we've looked at an ADA self evaluation that the town was doing, we had conversations around that. Um, I myself have participated eh, as a member of the Town Administrator Search Committee. So our town's looking for a new town administrator, I went in not as, not just as um. Somebody who lives in town, but also as a member of the committee, so I went with that perspective as well. Um, yeah, that's what's going on right now, but. I'm looking forward to hear, hearing more from you and um, definitely would be an asset to our committee.
Mitch?
Yeah, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Mary Alexandra, if you wanna say anything to that, please.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that in my current world role where I am, because of my master's degree. I was definitely pulled in uh, by the superintendent in terms of we have a committee. We call it the T N T P committee, but that's not an official name. We worked with T N T P, we got a grant um, to work with T N T P on diversifying our teacher workforce. So I've been a big part of that, we have a strategic plan where one of our commitments is definitely focused on the D E I. Piece of it, so from where I said, I definitely helped the district implement some of those things. So implement some of the strategic plan and some of the um, implementation plan in terms of things that we need to do. In order to reach our goal of diversifying our teacher workforce. Um, but I am curious, has there been a strategic plan? Or have there been some type of focus areas um, or findings, I guess, from the um, from the report? Um, not the report, from the um. What you just told me, the, oh, I'm blanking on the words.
The ad hoc committee?
Wasn't there a town evaluation of some sort that took place?
Okay, so um, one of our long term goals is to be able to have a diversity audit, basically, but that is not. Like, that's something that we would need to look into in the future. Um, that's not definitely something that, you know, we've discussed and that we would like, but there isn't one that's happened or a strategic plan that. We have right now, if that makes sense.
Okay, that's fine, no, absolutely, for some reason I thought that it had already happened, so I apologize.
I I mentioned ADA self evaluation, that was something the town was doing.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, so like, like Miriam said at the beginning, it it's a big umbrella from. You know, uh, people with physical disabilities to all the way to um. LGBTQ people, all the way to immigrants and people of color and we just like, it's just a big, it's a big thing. Um, and so they have a lot of work, but they also weave in and out of almost. Well, not all the other committees, probably not the. The land use committees, but the other ones, um, definitely. Community affairs, which we just did interviews for, um, you know, and a lot of other ones, so. And like the search for the new town administrator, we, we really wanted someone from D E I B on, on that search committee. To have that voice, so Mitch, did you have anything you?
I can't think of any additional questions, no.
Okay, so um, Mary Alexandra, how this would work is we make a recommendation this evening and then. Um, we bring you forward, we put you on the agenda for the September eleventh select board meeting and then. The full select board votes. On uh, whether or not to put you on the committee, but um. You're a very likely, very likely, very excellent candidate and um, we really appreciate you applying.
I really appreciate that, thank you, thank you so much once again for taking the time to meet with me tonight, I really appreciate it, I'm excited.
Thank you very much for for volunteering to get involved with town government.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for doing that, that is a big, and I love how you started with. I realize I don't know what's going on in my own town and I know everything about Fitchburg, like kind of a lightbulb moment, right?
Yeah, it is. It is, it is, for sure.
All right, well, thanks so much for coming this evening, it was great to meet you.
Thank you, pleasure meeting all of you and I hope to see you soon.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
And Alexandra.
All right, and Miriam, we are all set with you as well.
Good with me. It's good to see you guys, all right.
Yeah, thank you.
Later, bye.
Bye bye.
Okay, who is on our agenda next?
So we'll bring in Fred and Ingrid um, for the committee and Chris as the applicant.
Oh, just all three.
Yeah.
Perfect. Nobody else is. Thanks, Chris, hi, Chris, you're muted, by the way, just double checking that you're muted.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, here's the next guy, here's Fred, hello Fred. Hello, Ingrid.
Hello, how are you?
Nice to see you. Um, Fred, are you all connected, can you hear us, you're still muted though? Nice.
A little rusty.
Yeah, same, same, I get all excited when people pop on and then I forget to introduce myself, so thank you everyone for coming, I'm Kristen, Fred knows me, but. Um, Chris, thank you for volunteering to be on the recycling committee, I really enjoyed reading. Your resume, I was like, wow, this guy, he knows his recycling. Um, and this is my co interviewer Mitch Cohen. Julian Hirsch, who's usually on this committee with me. Um, but anyway, yes, you have um, a knock it out of the park recycling committee resume as far as I'm concerned. Loved it, loved reading it. Um. So why don't you tell it in your own words, since the, all the millions of people on YouTube watching us right now. To haven't had the privilege of reading your excellent resume, can you just tell us a little why you think you would be a good person to have on this committee?
So my background is in packaging, I work as a packaging engineer designing boxes for. Right now I do consumer electronic products, I've worked in food service in the past, um, my. And that's been my career for the last few years and then I have a couple of degrees in packaging from. When I was back in school, uh, and so I spend most of my day working on new boxes and figuring out how we can use different. Packaging technologies to make our boxes either more recyclable or incorporate uh, recycled content in our packaging. And for this committee, you know, I've obviously I've spent my career on the packaging side and so I'm. Curious about that and would love to help out, uh, but I'm also curious about just kind of the more. Broad aspect of, you know, we're trying to live more sustainably, we're trying to. Do better as a society with recovering. All these different materials, like it's not just your pop bottles and pizza boxes, like it's mattresses and carpets and all kinds of other weird stuff. And I don't know a whole lot about that and I'm really interested to learn and see how I can help support these programs with the town.
I appreciate you wanting to elaborate on what you do for work into your free time, so. Um, Ingrid and Fred, I would love to hear from both of you, maybe um. Ingrid, could you start a little bit with maybe how often the committee meets and when? And then a little bit about some of the things you do and then Fred can get into some of the things he supports you with.
Hey, sure, um, yeah, I've been on the recycling committee for a long time, Fred could probably remember. Um, back in the day when we used to have our annual event over at the middle school. So, yeah, so basically, Chris, um, yeah, thank you very much for your interest. Um, so the recycling committee has um, really two main events every year. Um, and one is take it or leave it day, uh, which is a townwide. Event that we hold at the DPW and it's um, a great opportunity to bring in usable household items. Um, and also um, to pick up usable household items. So um, with the, following the motto, one person's um, trash is another person's treasure. So it's, it's a, it's a great event, um, very uh, well. Um, attended and of course during COVID, we couldn't keep it, uh, we, we, we couldn't have it, but. Um, this past year, we had it for the first time since twenty nineteen and it was um. Um, people were very excited, we got high school students actually to attend and Kristen, I believe you were there as well. Helping.
Volunteers, yes.
Yeah, so um, the idea is people come in, um, we help unload their cars, try to organize uh, the, the items. And then at the end of the day, we, so we, we have the, not just household items, but also. Uh, we uh, encourage people to bring in cardboard for recycling, hard plastics, we have a dumpster for that metal. And um, yeah, that's about it and then typically the junior women's club has a. Um, styrofoam recycling event concurrently. Um, so that brings even more people in and people just really, they, they look forward to it. Um, because it gives them an opportunity to clean out their basements and also. It's a really nice community event, you see people that you haven't seen in a long time. And I'm sure that we can expand it somehow if we wanted to, if we wanted to bring in. Like, let's say, Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts and have people set up tables or, you know, some. I mean, we're, we're, we'd be open for new ideas, I'm sure. Um, so the second event that we have is Household Hazardous Waste Day, which is in the fall. Um, typically in October, November, where we sell boxes for um. On, let's see, three, three nights and then the day of the event. Um, so people buy, buy a box for ten dollars, then they fill it up or, you know. It is, uh, put their, their house, their hazardous waste items in the box and then bring it to. The DPW, um, so that's another, uh, I think very important event that we, that we have. Um, and typically, um, yeah, I would say that's very well attended and people really. Have relied on that over the last few years.
Sure.
Fred, do you have, what are your comments?
Um, uh, just a couple, well, a little more information on each of those events, um, since I. Do most of the planning and organize the stuff ahead of the event, I'm not quite sure who's gonna take that role on. Um, I don't know if you're aware, Chris, but I actually retired at the end of June. And am filling in part time until the, all of my duties are delegated to someone else. This one here, I'm not quite sure who's gonna end up with it, so I can explain it better than most since I. Reach out to all of the people to make it happen, um, as Ingrid said, Take or Leave It Day is a tremendous success, it's been going on for. Uh, well, the, I worked here for twenty five years and it was already happening before that. Uh, we had a, we had a three year hiatus uh, because of COVID nineteen and um. It was very well received, as Ingrid had said, there are a couple of things that I do in advance of that. To make sure that it goes as smoothly as it can, it's evolved over the years. To the point we have it at the DPW garage in the, in the spring, we have to coordinate with them on a weekend when. They can afford to have their site taken over by volunteers and residents who want to come and drop off and take stuff. Um, it, it encompasses the entire facility, I don't know if you've been down to the DPW garage at one ninety Main Street. Um, we try to get as many cars off of Route twenty, um, because. Before we got the logistics worked out, we had some traffic issues on Route twenty from people, again, very well received. Uh, we organize with our uh, collection contractor, he donates a dumpster for us. For uh, cardboard, paper and cardboard and another thirty yard dumpster for hard plastics. We pay for a dumpster for whatever we can't recycle, um, which has been reduced quite a bit by the fact that we can now. Recycle hard plastics, we get a lot of um. Kids' toys.
Okay.
You know, those outside toys, slides and seat teeter totters and sleds and things. Um, those that can't be given and donated to someplace get recycled. Uh, we get a lot of uh, cardboard boxes and cardboard in general. Um, we have been fortunate enough to work with the Junior Women's Club to collect styrofoam, which is a hard to dispose of item at the curb. Because um, it's not recyclable and it takes up a lot of room in your trash bag that you pay a good amount for, so we um, we look. Forward to working with them, they pay someone to come and take away the styrofoam. But they do not charge the residents anything for that service, it's something that they, they do for the community. Um. The day of the event, um, our recycling committee's been very good about organizing things. Trying to keep it moving and in a safe and orderly manner and I think over the years, we've, we've developed a pattern. For uh, traffic flow that's safer than it has been in previous years and then. We have to, we have to actually shut down and give them time to separate things, that's when. A lot of the recycling actually happens, a lot of the reuse happens during the day when people take stuff. And that's, that's the whole goal and then we have worked with uh, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, um. Habitat for Humanity, uh. Uh, there's a couple of Salvation Army and Goodwill and and let them know in advance that we're gonna have the event and if they can send someone. To take some of the items that could be beneficial to people that, you know, frequent those organizations, we're happy to have them. Because there's no money exchanges hands, um, other than what the Junior Women's Club pays to get rid of the styrofoam. Uh, the day after the event and so the recycle committee at that point is responsible for. Organizing the volunteers and separating all of the items that are left over after the one o'clock hour, so we uh. We have somebody who takes away the metal, but we try to reuse as much of the stuff as we can and donate books to the library or to the uh. There's a program, uh, Hands Across the Water that takes books and sends them to other countries. There are, we're sometimes able to get uh, bicycles sent to a bicycle shop where they get rebuilt and given to. Urban areas where kids might not have access to a bike, um. The metal gets recycled, it has been, we've been working with Frankenstein's Recycling in Worcester and they bring over a dumpster and then we just pile it up. And they come and clean it all up a day or two after the event, um.
So Fred, um, and Ingrid, are there opportunities beyond these two events that you've described? Um. Are, I mean, they, they may not be things that you're working on now, but. Um, if Chris was interested in coming up with. Or working with the, the committee on other um, other ideas where. A recycling committee could be useful, are there other? Other things that you do or you just do these two things over and over again?
Um. The committee has had different ideas over the years, but with limited staff to help facilitate them. We've been limited to these two items, uh, these two events, um, they take a fair amount of time to plan and organize and make sure that they go off. On a Saturday without any real inconvenience or problems, um.
Yeah, because they're pretty big, especially. Leave it there is a really big deal.
They are. The uh, the goal, the hazard, household hazardous waste day in the fall is something that. Um, we have been charging ten dollars a box, um, that doesn't cover anywhere near what the cost of the day is. Um, especially with COVID, it's, things have uh, skyrocketed um, in cost. And um, the goal is to sell those boxes in advance so that we're not selling the boxes the day of the event. Inevitably, there are people driving by saying, hey, what's going on, how do I get in on this? Um, and we tell them we're closing at noon, but here's a box, give me ten dollars, come back. And we tell them we're closing at noon, but here's a box, give me $10, come back with your full box of chemicals by noon and we'll take care of it for you. We work with a company out of Springfield Stericycle and they bring out a team of people and they just take the boxes out of people's trunks, cars, trucks, and then separate them into various chemical storage and then dispose of everything afterwards in accordance with the law. And so the whole day is kind of started and cleaned up. At the end of the day, there's nothing left over. It's, it's, it's a great way to incentivize people to do the right thing. $10 a box is pretty cheap. A lot of communities charge $40 or $50 a carload, which is a box or two. It's much more reasonably priced here until we raise the price. And even if we were to raise it, it wouldn't be much. We might make it $20 a box to cover more of the expense, but certainly not all. And it keeps people from putting things down the drain. It helps to meet our criteria for our stormwater program as well as recycling and reuse and keep the environment here in town safe. Go ahead.
I think the recycling committee would be open to some new ideas. One of the things, Fred, you could probably jump in and provide this information, but one of the thoughts that I had was I don't know if, what our, our recycling rate is in Northborough or if there would be any interest in improving it. Or maybe we're already recycling at such a high rate that we need to think of some other ways to, you know, encourage recycling in, in the community. I mean, now that you cannot throw mattresses into the trash. And so that, that's excellent. And then the textile recycling is something that I'm curious about whether people are really no longer throwing away clothing or, or rags or, or so. And I, I don't have any way of knowing how well we're doing with that. But one of the things that we have not done is actually gone into the schools and, you know, we did use to, and, and I think, Chris, you mentioned this as far as having a, a presence at community events. We used to have a table at Apple Fest several years in a row in the early days of the Pay as You Throw program to really encourage people to recycle as much as they can rather than throwing things in the trash.
Our, as Ingrid pointed out, our Pay as You Throw program started back in 2003. And in those early years, it was not very well received in the very beginning. It was, we, we went from taking people's trash and recycling with no fee and it was just built into the tax base and, and the budget required, the town budget required some forward thinking, which other communities were doing at the time, but not all like now. Now, almost all communities have a Pay as You Throw program. So our recycling percentage, as Ingrid referred to, went from the high teens, low 20% of the total trash to mid 30s, 30 to 35%. So it's on the uptake, but a lot of it had to do with the Pay as You Throw program and a lot of that stuff just couldn't go in the bag. And now the state has implemented some more waste bans like the mattresses and the box springs and upholstery and furniture like that. That's no longer allowed at the waste stream. They had incorporated other bans over the years, white goods. Cardboard is banned from trash because it's recyclable and, you know, glass and aluminum cans and all that. So all that helped. There's more we can do to educate people. It's just, we don't have the time to, staff time to dedicate to that on a daily basis.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I could talk about it all day.
I know you can because it's a passion for you and it's really great. I, I think we all share that sort of tonight, but we have all three people for traffic and safety waiting, I think, in the waiting.
That's fine. I apologize for going on.
Probably get going. So Chris, did you have any other questions?
I'm good as I get started. You know, I'm happy to, I, I'm new here. Like, I moved to Northborough a year ago. I'm open for support, whatever ideas y'all have had over the years and however it can help.
Welcome. Awesome. That's, you know, that's a great first step. And then who knows, another year or so, you'll be.
Well, the hazardous household day will come up at the end of October, so they'll be looking for people to volunteer. And it's a great time to sit with other committee members and go over the program and what's involved in the spring. So welcome aboard if, if I have anything to say about it. So.
Good for you. Sounds good.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks so much, Chris.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
If you have any questions, get in touch with us.
Yes, feel free to reach out.
All right. Bye bye now.
Good night.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Ingrid. Thanks, Brett.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Good night.
Good night, Fred and Ingrid. Thanks. Sorry to rush everybody. But we have three more people to interview.
Yeah, it's great that we have such passionate people for these boards and committees.
Yeah, well, and, you know, Fred still loves his job. So let's see. So we're doing Kevin first, yes?
Yes, yeah.
And we don't have a chair for this committee because it's brand new.
Correct. It's a new, yeah, new committee. Laura was the chair of the Preliminary Committee. But because this committee is new, there is no chair.
I think we can.
Yeah, I served on as a member on that committee. So I can speak to any specifics that were asked.
Well, there's Kevin. Hello, Kevin.
Hello.
I'm sorry to keep you waiting. We had a recycling committee interview just now that people got really fired up about and really wanted to chat. So I had to cut them off. But anyway, thank you for applying for traffic and safety. Would you like to just let us know? Oh, sorry, I'm Kristen and this is Mitch. We're the from the select board, right? And would you like to, to share any like reasons why you applied for this particular committee?
Well, originally I had an idea for downtown. I had seen an article in the Patch about, you know, people, the, the town looking for some ideas. And I sent an idea and, and I got a positive response from it about redirecting traffic. It's, I guess, in the law, what I found out though is that my idea was actually suggested years ago. So kind of didn't, that wasn't going to happen. But I was actually, I was requested if I wanted to be on the traffic committee. And I was like, hmm, you know, that might be all right. You know, we're, you know, decide on helping the, you know, police or helping the town that I live in and participating in some way.
Great, yeah. Well, that's what we need. We need volunteers to step up and say, hey, how can I help the town? So we have, so it says town official invite. What was that? What did you mean? How did you find out about it?
Probably there was an email that went out to anybody subscribed to the town newsletter.
Right, yeah.
Because this is a new committee, we do more proactive advertising for, for the positions than we do for, for simple vacancies.
So we're putting a whole committee together where.
Yeah. So I was on the.
Speak to it a little more? Do you want to just talk about?
Sure. So I, I was a member of the Temporary Traffic Safety Committee that was formed, that was given a six-month charge to investigate. Should we create a permanent traffic and safety committee? Or, or otherwise, and if, if we did want recommend that, what would it look like? What would the charge be? What would the duties be? What would the membership look like? So we met several times over probably about a four-month period is all we needed. Did a lot of research into other traffic safety committees throughout the state. Because this, there's no state law about towns having traffic safety committees. Every town does it their own way. So we did quite a bit of research and, you know, put together a big matrix of how other towns are doing it and then figured out what we thought would work for the town of Northborough. And, and summarized that into a document and then put that forward to the select board who gave it unanimous approval to, to create the committee. I'll read a tiny piece of the charge. The Northborough Traffic Safety Committee aims to promote and enhance the physical, social and economic environment in which all forms of pedestrian vehicle transportation can work together for a safe, clean, healthy and vital community. And there's a little bit more than that and a little bit about, about budget and other relatively boring details. So, so we're interviewing to, to fill out that entire new committee and get it started.
Yeah. Um, so uh, let's see, help with traffic issues. So the, the members of the committee will be is it four residents and a member of the select board and a member of the
Planning Board.
Department. And the planning board and the DPW?
So it's, the voting members are four members appointed by the select board and one appointed by the planning board.
Okay, but the staff liaisons will be from DPW and police, I believe. Because I remember the Blue Sheep saying he absolutely.
Yes, yeah, the DPW would be the driving force and in the staff connection and police department would have a very active role.
Yes.
And other, other departments would be pulled in as, as appropriate for the site or the issue that comes up. And the, the, one of the primary sources of information would be a form that will likely get filled out. That form needs to get created on the town website that people can, you know, whether they have a complaint or a suggestion as to ways of improving traffic safety as well as initiatives that the committee will likely take on on to its own.
Right. So do you have any other questions, Kevin?
No, not really. How often do you meet or will you meet?
We'll probably meet once a month, right?
Oh, okay.
Committees meet once a month and we don't.
Do we meet in person or are we going to always do Zoom or?
Hopefully it would be hybrid at some in the future.
I'm new to this, so.
Figuring that out.
The temporary committee met entirely remotely using Zoom, but the the committee will, will, once it is formed, will decide how it wants to meet.
Okay.
And so we don't make a decision tonight. We have to, well, the interview committee usually makes recommendations, but Mitch is just standing in tonight for Julianne Hirsch, who's my other, and she, we had traffic and safety on two different nights. So she did the interviews for the other committee. So I'm not sure we're going to be recommending anybody this evening. Hopefully the, the board will vote on it on September 11th, but if not, it would be the meeting after that later in September. So anyway, we'll keep you posted. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Volunteers.
Great meeting you.
All right. Nice to meet you too.
Nice to meet you. Yep, thanks.
Good night. Bye.
I'm just.
Crispocetus is.
I think it's pronounced diachetus. We'll see if I'm right. Or I'll maybe meeting people.
And Chris was on the temporary committee.
Can you see the waiting room?
Yeah, I can see the waiting room. We would let him in.
Yeah, let Chris in. For some reason, I couldn't get at it. Now I see it again. Hello, Chris.
Hi, Chris. You're muted, sir. It's been too long for me to do a Zoom call, so I'm a little rusty.
Right. Okay, um, so thanks for throwing your hat in the ring again for traffic and safety. Oh, I know we don't have to explain to you what the group was, would be doing. You have Mitch is here tonight because Julianne couldn't make it, in case you were wondering.
I'm not usually on the interview committee, but of course, Chris and I know each other from the Temporary Traffic Safety Committee that we both served on.
Yeah.
So, and you're on the Earthworks Board too. That's good. So you're a civil engineer and you do roadway design. So do you want to just, I don't know, do you want to just talk a little bit about why you want to keep being on this committee and what you think you can help us with?
Yeah, so, you know, as you mentioned, I've been doing roadway design for eight years. So it's kind of something that's piqued my interest and it's something I've, I've spent my career on thus far. Actually, I'm in the middle of a, of a job change right now. I'm actually going to work for, for Mass DOT in the aeronautics division. So dealing with the airports. I'm starting up actually September 11th. So I got a few more weeks of, of some time off before I go back. But, you know, I did do roadwork for eight years. It's still something that, you know, I, I still deeply care about. An expression, you know, in town, you know, just being part of that, you know, traffic and safety committee to help keep our roads safe. You know, I'm starting to grow my little family here in Northborough. So it's important for me to, you know, make sure the roads are safe and, you know, for all all users of, of all sorts. And it's something I'm passionate about and, and something, you know, I can be myself helping, you know, work with the town and other people in the committee and as well as, I think Scott's probably going to be part of the committee to the head of the committee, you know, working with.
He'll be the, the primary staff liaison. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, working with him. To kind of, you know, help take some of the stress off of him because there's a lot of different, you know, funding sources and, and different types of things that go on behind the scenes that general public might not know about. But it's, it always ends up being a lot of work. So kind of helping to take a little bit of that burden off of him.
Yeah, yes. Okay, great. So I don't know. Was there anything else, Mitch, you want to mention?
As I said, I, I had the pleasure of working with Chris on the temporary committee. So I have no questions from my.
It was a really good committee. I did hear that. It was a very good.
It was a really good group.
Yeah, we had a good group. There's a lot of good discussion, grow, you know, a lot of good ideas that were brought to the table. And there's never, you know, I think when it comes to, you know, our, keeping our streets safe and anything like that. You know, there is, like I said, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, but the best source of knowledge is the general public who uses it every day. You know, the input you get from them is way better than, you know, any, anything else you can really pull. And, and that information is always so vital, you know, to to any roadway project. I mean, I've dealt with plenty of roadway projects before where we have one idea, you know, we kind of put it together and then we brought it to the public and they had a completely different idea and ended up changing the design to better suit their needs and what they wanted. So it's always important to have, you know, a good public representation of people who are, who are driving the roads every day, going through the intersections every day and whatnot.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. We are probably not gonna make recommendations tonight just because Julianne's not here and she and I did the last set of interviews. So we're going to figure that out. We're going to figure that out. But hope, we're, we'll try. I really want to get this committee up and running. It's really important to me to, I've been a pain in the neck about traffic and safety for a long time around here. So I am excited for this committee and I really want to get it going as soon as possible. So if we don't get a chance as a full board to vote on the members at our September 11th meeting, we'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
But you'll hear about it. Yeah. Thanks so much, Chris.
All right. Thank you both. Have a good night.
Thanks, Chris. Good to see you.
Okay, I'm also trying to keep notes for my minutes for Diane.
Okay, great. You want me to bring Brian in?
I just did.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, because it popped back up. I don't know what happened. It like froze, maybe. Hello, Brian.
Unmeet yourself, please.
How you doing?
Hi.
Brian.
So I enjoyed reading your application. Now, were you on the previous committee or no?
No, we just moved here last October. So we, this is my first dipping my toe into the waters of Northborough Municipal Government.
But did you call into a board meeting? I remember someone who rides their bike a lot calling into a board meeting, talking. Right, but did you call into a board meeting? I remember someone who rides their bike a lot calling into a board meeting, talking about what it's like to be a cyclist in Northborough.
No, that wasn't me either. I honestly, I haven't even tried. It's 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 bad enough outside or by the house that it's not. It's not worth me trying.
It's not worth you trying what?
Riding my bike. You take your like, you take your life in your hands, walking from here to the coffee shop like two hundred yards away.
Okay, yeah.
There are some great, there are some great places to to ride. I I occasionally do and and there are plenty of places to be careful.
Yes. Um, so.
And Brian, I think you and I met uh met once. Uh we we share a friend in Kate Donahue.
Yeah, it sounds familiar.
Yeah. Of course, we all know Representative Donahue now.
Mm hmm.
Right, okay. So um so you, I mean, you answered the questions really well and you gave a lot of good examples of why um why you would be a good uh representative of the Traffic and Safety Committee, and I see that's right, you were the one who was um, I read all these things like ahead of time and then I have
And then it's.
Oh, this guy was on the Milford um planning board, right? So that is relevant information, just because you understand how boards and committees work, which you know.
And in addition to the planning board, you know, like it says, I was on the uh and uh uh trying to improve election turnout and and the cultural committee before that and a handful of other things, too many things.
So you you dipped your toe in a little deeper than maybe you meant to in Milford, and now you're just barely dipping into Northborough.
Yeah, um. A lot of that activity was before um my daughter was born.
Wow.
And that alongside the, you know, the the random to do list that pops up anytime you have a new house. Uh we just, I haven't had, I I'm haven't had the ability to extend myself as much.
Okay. Yeah, well, no, I I understand that. I waited till my kids were big and then I started volunteering for boards and committees. So um I see in your letter too, you have um that you you wanna make it safer um walking, make it a more walkable community, and you wanna work with the um MPSC and the you know, the planning board or the select board. Um so would you like to speak to that a little more?
Sure, I mean, one of the, and like, and I think I mentioned this in the letter, one of the 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 things we miss the most about our old house or old neighborhood was the ability to just go for a walk or, you know, go on a little bike ride and and go up and down the street. And look, eh, the street I'm on is a lot busier and I'm aware of that, but um it it driving around town, it it still feels to me like it is difficult. It is difficult for for pedestrians. Um and and I do feel like in a lot of areas people are, you know, walking traffic, uh bike traffic is is sort of an afterthought, if any. Um. And and I think you know, we the 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 downtown um the downtown groups are are trying to look at sort of that revitalizing that area. And I, and what we found when we looked at that sort of thing in Milford was that people want to be able to park once and walk. Like the ability, like parking availability is great and all, but what makes a a downtown vibrant, what makes a town uh fun frankly, is the ability to get out of your car, go to one store and then bump into an ice cream store next door or a art gallery or a um uh music store or whatever. Um and so that's that's some of the the that's some of the the sort of philosophy, I think, that I would like to try and and uh bring to to this committee as well.
Okay. Great, um so Mitch, you were on the the initial
Yeah.
Would you like to talk a little bit about?
Sure, so we we met uh several times over roughly a four month period um to determine first, uh would the town benefit from a traffic safety committee? And if so, what it would look like. So we did a very detailed review of traffic and safety committees throughout the state. There is no state law guiding towns as to what those committees look like, so as many towns as we found, we found each one being a little bit different. Um so we wanted to see, okay, you know, now that we have all this data, what would that look like? Uh for Northborough, what would be the best formation? So we came up with something that we thought worked pretty well. We brought it to the full select board who endorsed it, and we are now interviewing to fill out this new committee. So there is uh there is no no cherry yet. There's no saying, you know, exactly when the meetings will be. That will be up to the committee members to determine. Um I'll read uh one sentence from the charge. Um the Northborough Traffic Safety Committee aims to promote and enhance the physical, social, and and economic environment in which all forms of pedestrian and vehicle transportation can work together for a safe, clean, healthy, and vital community. And there's there's more and some, you know, some more details in that in that charge. Um but that would be the basically the guiding document as as far as what the committee will do. The committee will take on uh new initiatives uh as they see fit, as well as respond to um to residents' input. So residents can fill out a form currently that goes to the DPW on traffic safety issues and it's dealt with on a staff level, and many of those issues can be dealt with very, very quickly by the DPW, and that's a sign fell down and needs to get rebuilt or something like that. Um but when it comes to larger questions such as uh, you know, adding, whether it be adding stop signs or adjusting speed limits and things like that, that's a more detailed discussion that involves um you know, input from the police department frequently, input certainly from the DPW, uh state regulations as it applies to the town. Um and sometimes discussions with um residents in in the affected area. Uh and so so all of those would be committee topics that I anticipate the group would uh would discuss.
So does the police department have an ex officio presence on this board?
Yes.
Right, or committee, excuse me.
Yep, yeah, the um the chief of police or their designee, um I I anticipate will attend most of all meetings. The, yeah, the DP, yeah, the DPW director will be the primary staff member assisting with the the operations. And then other departments could be brought in as necessary or appropriate. There might be a situation where the fire department might need to be brought in or or, you know, recreation depending upon where the situation's located.
If you don't mind my asking, I know Northborough is going through the um the complete streets process as well, correct?
Yes, correct.
Differentiates this group from that process.
Um so Complete Streets is a uh is a process primarily driven by the planning director and um and then funded from uh from from state grants and the the select board has already met to discuss. We're we're waiting for um details back from the state now on how much money we'll get in the first year, and then we'll decide what that funding gets used for. Um I imagine the Traffic Safety Committee might have some say, this is pro, the area that we're looking for for complete streets is primarily downtown.
Of course.
Not not exclusively, but primarily um.
I mean, like, that's the the DPW director and the planning director both said that's how you get the that's more likely you'll get the grants if you have it in your downtown.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, but we did have a it may have been before you moved here, we had a uh like a a survey that we sent out, what were the priorities um for sidewalks in particular that people um wanted for.
I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to remember if I saw that at the library or not. Um.
And and maybe bike lanes and that kind of thing, so they did. And then the planning director ultimately with the DPW director I think chose which things made the most sense, right?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and it's a little complicated in that uh the main road through downtown Route twenty is a state road. So Big Streets doesn't provide any funding for that, and the town has no authority over that, so we'd have to work with with the state there.
Always fun.
But we have a lot of um we have a lot of roads. I just looked up where your street is. We have a lot of roads like your street. My street is one of them. Where you would like to just be able to go out and walk down the road, but you're taking your life in your hands doing that, and there are so many places where it would be so great if we could just get some sidewalks for the residents, because you're not that far from something else that isn't treacherous to walk on, but you can't get there unless you get your car, so I I mean, ultimately, I would love um traffic and safety to have input on, you know, where we could add sidewalks to just improve the livability and the walkability of lots of neighborhoods, not just the downtown, but.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
But of course, like, you know, if if the if the downtown area is the one that the state is going to focus on for grants, then yeah, naturally, that's where that's gonna prioritize.
Right, but that provides, that provides a very large footprint for things that Traffic Safety Committee can work on.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Sure, sure.
Like everything else, like it's a limited budget, it's a limited amount of resources, you know.
But the the, I mean, I like the idea of having the police um have a voice on this committee, because they really know where the worst traffic accidents are.
Of course.
And so they will know that there's a certain terrible curve right near Armino Coffee. There's probably, I mean, a lot of accidents there. It's, that's a scary spot. I don't know if um there have been conversations about how to make that road safer, but I mean, if there's a lot of accidents.
Yeah, I mean, without actually changing the bridge over the the little brook there, like you know, there's only so much. Um.
Mm hmm.
I've not seen any accidents, fortunately. I have.
Slow down.
I have seen um some traffic snarl ups caused by turtles. That's about it. Um.
That's nice to know.
Yeah. Uh.
Yes, turtles. That's cute. All right, well, um. So yeah, so we are uh did I say this to you about making recommendations?
No, but I was listening on the other guys come up to see where we were in the interview process.
Yeah, so we're we're probably not gonna make, because we had we had a different um interview committee of time, so we really need to be able to um get together on that, Julianne and I, I guess, but um anyway, so if we don't vote as a select board on the se, on the eleventh, that we'll be at our next meeting, and then hopefully get this committee up and running quick in October.
Just in time for the roads to get cold and no one will wanna be walking around outside.
Yeah, oh, oh, a reason to get all the work done in the fall and the winter, so they're really.
True, line all the money up and then.
Yeah. Right.
Start digging in the in the spring.
Yep.
Well, well, thank you all for for having me and um I look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah.
Thanks for applying, Brian.
Brian, it was nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
Okay, see ya.
Take care.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so should we vote on the ones other than the Traffic and Safety Committee?
I I'd be fine with that. Um we can, we can do that and make a a shorter meeting when you regroup with Julianne.
Yeah. And and then that way, oh, she'll probably watch this video anyway. Hi, Julian. But um we um we, so let's go back. We can vote on Olya for Community Affairs Committee. She was the only applicant and um.
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion.
I'll uh move that the interview committee recommend Olya Groza for the Community Affairs Committee.
Second. So we will take a roll call vote, just the two of us. It's a little bit silly, Mitch, but we're gonna do it.
This is the law.
Mitch Cohen.
Mitch Cohen, I.
And I, Kristen Rickstead, vote I, so Olya is recommended for CAC. Okay, and then Olya again. And we can um recommend.
Can we do that together in one motion?
Mary Alexandra for both. Well, there's only two of them, so we can if we want to, or we can separate them if we want to.
I I I'm comfortable dealing with them together, given that they're two qualified candidates for two open positions. I'll move that um we recommend both Olya Groza and Mary Alexandra Molina to the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee.
Second. Roll call vote Mitch.
Mitch Cohen, I.
And I, Kristen, vote I, so they are both um recommended for the DEIB. Um. And that was a yeah, that was, that was good. We've had some good, good people. I do feel like the recycling committee, which I did not expect, people get so excited about um went um much longer and much more passionately than I expected.
It was great. It was great. It was it was an opportunity for honestly for me to learn a little bit about what that committee does, isn't one that I've been very exposed to before. Certainly, I'm familiar with the projects they do.
Yes. And I did volunteer at Take It or Leave It Day this year because I had been to it back in twenty nineteen or whatever. And I remember thinking I would love to volunteer at this, because it's it's totally my kind of thing, because it's categorizing stuff. And I would be really helpful and I get really enthusiastic, so I spent a few hours at it. Um. This year, I got there in the morning and then I worked for, I don't know, two and a half hours or something, and then.
Right, yeah, yeah, I've, I mean, I've been to it before, but I've never volunteered.
Yeah, and I I did, I did bring a car full of stuff, and then I came home with not nearly as much stuff, but a little bit of stuff that I was really excited about. Um so that was good. So should we nominate?
Yes, I will move that we recommend Chris Wilson to the Recycling Committee.
Second. Um roll call vote Mitch Cohen.
Aye.
And I, Kristen, vote I, so he is recommended for the Recycling Committee, and we appreciate his willingness to volunteer. Um and then so we have ultimately uh five candidates for four positions for traffic and safety, which if any committee is going to have more people than it needs, I love that it's that one, because people are, people care.
Yeah.
Really care.
Yeah, that's gonna be, I I think, a very important committee for the community.
So many. So um okay, well, we will hold off then on making recommendations for that one. And um Julianne will watch this and we can say, uh, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Okay, second. We will vote again, Mitch.
Aye.
And I vote I, so we are adjourned. And uh thank you for helping out tonight. You just have to come back when we do the minutes, when we vote on the minutes.